The school board meeting for Tuesday, September 6th, 2022 is now in session. We'll have our pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Jane Crawford and our invocation by Pastor John Schaefer, St. James United Methodist.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Almighty God, by your grace, have mercy on us, we pray, and hear our prayer. You created us, O God, and have called us to live lives of righteousness, peace, wholeness, and justice. You have encouraged us to seek out knowledge that we might gain wisdom and understanding. Those who are gathered here today are here to administer to our children's education and are tasked with helping our children grow in knowledge, wisdom, and understanding. We thank you for each one and ask that you would be a light and a guide to this body in the discussions that will take place, in the decisions that will be made, and in the policies that will be developed, that all will be done in peace and according to your will. Help us to remember that what's done here today is done out of our love for our children, that they might be afforded the greatest opportunity we can provide to live the lives of righteousness, peace, wholeness, and justice that you have called us to. By your grace, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll begin the meeting with presentations. First is Renee Huff with the building construction.
Thank you for allowing us to be here today and to give you a little update on our Building Construction Technologies Program at Interlochen Junior Senior High School. Today I have with me our instructor, Mr. Eddie Parcher, and one of his students, Jaden So today, we're going to talk a little bit about how we got there. And we met with our community members and several different construction-related business partners, and this is a need in our community. So we met with them, and we also met with Mr. Charles Smith and Ms. Joyce Oliver, and they talked about the community foundation and the possibility of applying for a grant. We applied for that grant and were awarded $100,000. And then we also were able to apply for an appropriation with the state, and we have received $523,000 that hopefully will be awarded, it's awarded, but hopefully will be available to us soon, and we will be able to continue to purchase items for our building construction program. And as I said, this is our instructor, and this gives you a little bit of information about Mr. Parcher, and would you like to?
Sure.
I could suit him up and put him on the football field.
Nope. That day's coming and going. But anyway, I am a graduate of Palacka High School, 1983. I was on the state championship team in 1981, and I've lived in Putnam County for 46 years, been married to my wife, Kim, who is also a teacher. She is a TOSA out at Interlochen. She's a testing coordinator. And I knew she was busy, but just to give, you know, props to teachers, instructors, and administrators, I've gotten to see the inside of this, and man, wow, what a lot of work it is, but it is very rewarding work to do and to see kids grow, and that is wonderful. Have two grandchildren, I have two grandchildren, a second one coming in January, my son Josh, which also graduated from Palacka High School, is a Clay County deputy now. He and his wife live in Orange Park, and we will have a little boy coming in January. I have a five-year-old granddaughter named Violet, who is, just winds my clock, so I'll be honest with you. So my daughter Rose graduated from Palacka High. She is a nurse now. She is an in-home medical caregiver, so she travels to homes and stuff and takes care of those that are shut-ins. So in my experience, a little bit about my background, I had 15-plus years in nuclear power. My main title, if you will, I was the refuel floor coordinator and supervisor when I did leave, and I was in charge of disassemble and reassemble of nuclear reactors, heads, and just taking care of that. I also have 10 years of experience right here in Putnam County in residential work, and I had three years of experience out in Denver, Colorado, doing T1s, building repeaters, crossboxes, and just about everything you can do with wire. So anyway, and also, I'm an associate pastor. I've been in ministry at the God Be the Glory for 17 years, and it's been a wonderful time. And in my spare time, I like playing golf and fishing. Don't have, I need more spare time so I can enjoy it a little bit more, but anyway, that's pretty much it, and just love being with my family and hanging out with my wife, so that's who I am.
Well, we're glad you're back.
So we have partnered with NCCER, which is the National Center for Construction Educational Research, and they are our partners with our curriculum, as well as the Florida Masonry Company Department, that we will also have masonry out at Interlochen High School, along with electrical, carpentry, and we would like to add plumbing and HVAC in the future. But NCCER is our partner, and they have sent you the blue bags that you see there with you with some of the different, just some little cute items that they have for people whenever they do different vendor times, and so they were able to send us some bags so that you can have some gifts. This is the beginning of our facility when we were cleaning out the old agricultural shop at Interlochen High School, and these are some pictures of the before. And, you know, as we were trying to clean out, we also had to repair and renovate the classroom so that we could move the ag classroom over next door. So this is just some of the before, and this is our floors that Mr. Parcher painted for us. And then now, these are the new tables that we have purchased for Mr. Parcher's class, and he has them now set up in the shop. This is his classroom, which we have ordered tables for this classroom because Ms. Houck had to move her tables for the ag class, so we have tables that are purchased for him. And these are just some of the projects that Mr. Parcher has talked about doing. They're currently working on some picnic tables, as you see here. We're also going to partner with the fair board and do some benches and picnic tables for the fair, so he and I will be meeting with the fair board here soon, and they've already started getting busy and working with the athletic department out at Interlochen High School, and they're building, putting together some picnic tables for the softball field, right? Wasn't that softball field?
Yeah, that was, what that was, was a picnic table that the wood had totally rotted, and we saw it, and we grabbed it and said, okay, we have this a project.
And these are some of the students, which, would you like to say something about building construction?
Sure.
Okay.
Give a testimonial.
Yeah. So in building construction, so far, we've learned how to read tape measures, how to identify what lengths on the tape measures are, how to properly use sanders. We are going over safety for saws, all types of equipment. We have sanded down tables. We're planning on, we're planning on making benches for the softball field because the way they are designed is just hard for them to maneuver, so we're going to move them up and try and help out our school.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Eddie, is this just, you've got building construction one now?
Yes, ma'am. Actually, it's one and two.
And they'll go through four, so they could take it each year?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it a block class?
It is a block class. I have three, it's three blocks.
So you can get something done.
Yes, ma'am. One hour and 40 minutes, I believe it is, is what it is, three times a day.
Well, good. And so then they'll take a certification test at the end, just like our other CTE courses?
Yep. Yes, ma'am.
There are several that are available for, through NCCER, and we're also looking at HCI, HBI.
HBI, yes.
HBI, industry certifications as well. So with NCCER curriculum, there are electrical, there's a core, we're teaching core right now, which is basic construction skills, and there's masonry, and they'll also have OSHA, which is for, you know, whenever they go get a job, they need the OSHA certification for safety. So those are areas that we are planning on providing for our students.
So it's kind of like, but back in the day, they were all separate courses, and you've got them kind of rolled into one now, so they don't learn it all.
We'll go semester, semester, semester. One of the things that, you know, we've had an opportunity to talk about, which I think is a very valuable piece of construction, is the interviewing process. When you sit down with someone, what to expect, and what is the person that is interviewing you, what do they expect, and, you know, just teaching them, you know, be excited about what you're doing. You know, be enthusiastic.
Work ethic and dependability.
Yes. I call it a real world, the class, you know, because I say, you know, I know you can pass missing days in school and whatnot and stuff like that, but going out into the real world, when you go out into the real world, they expect five days a week.
Yeah.
And they expect 98% to 100%, you know, correct when you go in or you're costing someone money, so that has been expressed, so it's really, and they're catching on to it, and they're growing. I mean, it's really, I've seen a lot of growth, especially in the areas of just learning how to read a tape measure. It's been, it's been really good.
I haven't, I haven't really followed the funding in the last year or two, Renee, that would, normally used to come to career tech funding, and Rhonda could write a book.
What was that man's name that you got used to get money from? From the state, what you're talking about? It was some kind of money that...
Perkins.
Perkins.
Yes, we still get Perkins funding.
It all changes, and people think that the school district can just...
Do whatever they want.
Do whatever they want, and it doesn't really work that way, but we have to depend on what Renee and the Instructional Division bring to the superintendent to recommend to us.
Industry demand.
Yeah, our board, our responsibilities are policy and budget, and, you know, we've got to figure out a way to fund it if the money comes. And Eddie, what you're doing is wonderful. These kids are learning life skills, they'll be able to build their own homes, they'll be able to help, they'll get jobs. Anytime they can exit high school with industry certification is just phenomenal.
Yes, sir.
You know, they're not going to all go to college, and they'll make more money than a lot of college graduates.
I hope that we can have it at all three high schools before it's over with.
Absolutely. Well, and that's what I was going to say, let the superintendent, just let us know if there's something we need to do as a board.
Well, I'll just say, this whole program has been something that people have been talking to me about for years, and we are very fortunate to get the $100,000 grant last year for planning, and then with the appropriation this year, you know, that's going to be, really serve a big need in our county, especially as we have new schools built, you know, there's going to be a lot of demand for that. So I also want to mention, I don't know if you want to just mention briefly about Crescent City?
Well, we have applied for an appropriation for Crescent City Junior Senior High School for Building Construction Technologies Program as well, and we received an email Friday, I think it was, that it is going through, so it will be a planning year for Crescent City Junior Senior High School, and hopes that next year we'd be able to start out as we are at Interlochen, so with a core, and start with a building construction program.
And again, that would be in conjunction with the building of the new high school, so we could be able to, you know, actually create our own structure there to meet the needs of our, of that program as well. And I know Eddie's gone in or had to transform an existing facility, but this other one, you know, we could really design that to meet our needs.
Well, in years, years past, we've had students in construction programs build portables and everything under the sun just for the district, but I did, I don't see welding on there, and I would like to encourage us to try to find a way to get...
We have welding.
Is it under fabrication?
Okay, so this is just business partners?
Okay, okay.
These are just business partners that helped us and worked with us, that did letters of support for our appropriation funds.
I got you.
And so we just wanted to show some of the ones that did whenever we did our appropriations back in the spring, and they wrote letters of support for the community foundation grant as well as for the state appropriation. We have three welding programs at the high schools, and they have industry credentials, and they, you know, work with some of these businesses as well in doing some work, so, but we do have the three welding programs.
I had a grandson that was getting into it at Palacka High, but he went back to QI, and he's not able to take welding, but I have not, and I think it's something we might consider in the future, having a board workshop on career techs, things.
Yes, sir. Okay. We'd be glad to.
In the future, let's look at doing something like that, educate us, re-educate us.
And we just wanted to say thank you to Community Foundation. We invited them to be here today, but they weren't able to be here, but I think they're going to be watching from, you know, live stream, so they're the ones that helped us with the $100,000. It helped us to get Mr. Parcher hired, as well as the renovations and the tables that you see that were purchased, so we've been able to have those funds to be able to get us started. So, and we have other things that are going to be ordered as soon as the state appropriation funds are released. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Eddie, I still remember watching you play football. I loved it.
Well, he's on sidelines now.
Yep, he's on the sidelines now.
Thank y'all.
If you didn't get there by the kickoff, you weren't going to see John L. run the kickoff back for a touchdown.
Sure.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Houck.
Thank you.
So exciting to see new, new programs in, not just Crescent City, but in Putnam County. Next, we'll have a presentation by Randy Hedstrom, the Tracy G. Brown Memorial Recognition.
Billy and Tammy Cruz came, they had contacted me and wanted to do something for mental health and for it to go, because there are a lot of times in the mental health allocation, we're funded to do certain things, but we can't use that money for if a family's in need or if a child needs cloak, this, that, and another, that we just not allocated to do that. So Billy and Tammy, they weren't able to be here, but I did want to recognize them. They did a golf tournament for the mental health allocation, and they raised $4,200, which we placed in a fund that they are able to do some of the things for that. So we had a plaque to present, and I'll make sure that they get that, but they raised the money and did that, and I thought it was worth their, you know, the board needed to know about it, that the community with the mental health recognition of some of the issues and so on that we have, but they're willing to do that.
Do you know if it's going to be a yearly?
It has been for 20, 20 years.
He has a tournament each year, but this year he wanted to do that. Tracy was who...
Tammy's brother.
Brother that had an issue with that, and it never was resolved and ended tragically. So they wanted to do that, but they didn't have to do that, and they came to me, and so I felt that was a good way, but did want to make sure that they were recognized for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Okay, we now will move to the public comment section, and I have one public comment. Elaine Jackson.
Elaine Jackson, 148, Cinnamon Drive, Interlochen, Florida. I'm going to have that down pat. Okay, I just had a question. Do we have dates yet, or are we going to do another community forum in Palacka and Interlochen about?
Yeah, we got, Ashley, do you have that information?
I do, I have a question about two weeks.
Two weeks, okay.
September Day in Central and October Day in West.
October and West, okay.
And the West will be in Melrose.
It'll be at Melrose Elementary and the West and Kerry Smith Elementary in Central.
Okay, awesome. Also, I had the opportunity of, there's a professor at the University of Gainesville or Florida, and he's applying for a grant. He's got a really good reputation of getting approval of these grants, but he had a Zoom meeting, and his grant is going to be based for rural areas of Florida communities, and the grant will be trying to go out into these communities and having leaders of the community come forward and say, there's a need in our area for more mental health help, or just any broad range that any leaders can see, and what they do are they're going to try and set up individuals in our areas with their own businesses to try to, you know, put money back in our community and then, but provide, meet a need of the community as well. So September is when he'll know if he gets funded, but I didn't know if the board would be interested if he did get funded of, or who I would talk to to see if we wanted to be involved in that.
I think Randy would be a good one if it's mental health.
Okay. Well, I mean, anything. It doesn't have to be mental health. I just thought, no, it could be anything. If we see that we have a need in our community, I know we have a high homeless population for our kids, and they're not able to, I know we feed throughout the summer through the schools, but if somebody had an idea or wanted to start a business to try to help meet that need, we could go to them, present it, and then if it meets their approval, you, it's like in sections, so you'll get X amount of money for startup for your business, and then as you grow, you know, there's different steps you have to take and provide them the information, then they'll give you more money to continue to grow that business, but I thought for our area, it might be something you guys might be interested in.
I will, I will go back through any materials that I may have. When the county commission years ago passed the Better Place Plan, they came to the school board, that was the district school superintendent then, and they asked for the school district to write a vision plan for the children of Putnam County to enable, to help them get the votes to pass the Better Place Plan, which I guess is about to play out now, I don't know. Anyway, long story short, we did, I did that, and covered everything from homeless children to poor housing where the screens were ripped and mosquitoes and flies get on food and refrigerators weren't at proper temperature.
Yes, sir.
You know, we got pretty deep into that. If I can find a copy of that, I will get it to you.
Oh, I will send it to him. Yes, sir.
The county may have kept it. Brad Purcell was the commissioner on the, county commissioner at the time when I did that, and I really, I hated to get into another government's turf when they were trying to raise taxes, but we're kind of like that in the bond issue. You know, when you need help, you need help, and whether you get it or not, you don't know, but I will look for that. If I can find it, I'll get it to the superintendent and see if I can...
That's, that would be great.
If not, you know, I'll contact the county and see if they may have archived it somewhere.
Okay. And another thing that I was trying, because this isn't, so he's asking for the grant, but the grant is set up where it could be changed, because he knows, you know, in order to succeed, he's going to fail. And so an idea that I had, and it would be if you guys, and then even, I guess he could go to the college, but if we have students who are interested in entrepreneurship and business, could we, his grant, offer scholarships for them, you know? Because if we don't have anyone in the community, but we've got students who want to stay in the community and give back, would he be able to set up, you know, some type of grant or scholarship maybe for education through this grant? Like, is that something that we could do? Or I'm not sure how it works.
It depends on how the grant was written.
Was written.
We have to really look into it, and...
Okay.
I would suggest, and Ashley, I think you'd be the one that Elaine could talk to.
Okay.
She does a lot of our community coordination.
Okay, okay.
You know Ashley McCool.
Yeah, yeah.
As you get information...
I'll just send it to you, Ashley, okay.
She can get with us, and we can sit down and look at the grant.
Okay, yeah, because I mean, I think it'd be great for the community, and we all know that. The state's taking our money, so.
Even, could he come and speak?
So I'm sure he could right now. It was like a Zoom meeting, and he had a whole bunch of different people from different areas, and he just pitched the idea. It was part of what he had to do to get funding for the grant, and then once the funding comes through, then he will need, he will reach back out to us, let us know, and then he'll actually need people who, throughout all of our communities, who want to participate and, you know, go out and help and, and just kind of grow. His long-term goal is to go all over out of the state of Florida, but his short-term goal is here in Florida, so I, if Putnam County can be number one on that, I want us to be ahead of everybody else raising their... I don't even want to pronounce his last name. Ben is his first name. I will, I can email you his whole name, but I do not want to do him an injustice and say it completely wrong, because I...
Appreciate an email.
Yeah, yeah, I will send you his email. I don't have the Zoom, I guess, you know, that was his personal for the school, but I can definitely get, send everyone his email, so if anyone has ideas, everyone can reach out. But thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll, we'll push those dates out on the other forums soon as we have it.
Do we have any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we have no public hearing, so we'll move to the consent agenda portion. Ms. Gilliard, do you have anything you'd like to pull?
Yes, and I've already spoken with him. I'm going to pull G2, just for discussion. He shared some information that I feel like everybody needs to hear.
Yes, ma'am. Is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Buckles?
I met with the superintendent and the associate superintendent prior to the meeting, and we're, we're working on some concerns. I may mention them in, or may not, in my board update.
Thank you. Mr. McGinnis?
Nothing to pull.
Ms. Crawford?
Nothing to pull.
And I also have nothing to pull, so...
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, we accept the consent agenda as presented minus G2.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. David Buckles and a second by Ms. Sandy Gilliard to accept the consent agenda minus G2. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries 5-0.
Madam Chair, we have Randy Hedstrom to hear to answer your questions about G2.
And it was, when the two of us spoke, it wasn't for questioning, he took care of all my questions, but I thought the information that he shared with me, others would want to hear it. I mean, he had all the facts, and so there may be some that are viewing that would want to hear what he has to say.
And it's like I told Randy, and I'll say it to the Rays as well, the newspaper article, not what was on the board agenda, the newspaper article is kind of what brought up some questions, but Mr. Hedstrom answered them all. I came down last week, but he wasn't here, and he answered them all today, so I'm, I'm fine, but I do think everyone needs to hear what he has to say.
Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to explain what we're trying to do. The last, I've been working on this for the last two years, as, as you know, that we do, unfortunately, at times have to expel students from the school system, and I know that's something that y'all don't want to do, but there are things students do get into that brings complications that we must protect all and so on. And so been working on this. Mr. Bowlen and the superintendent have appointed me several occasions to see what we can do to give some answers to some of the parents within the community that have come to a hard place with their, their kids in the household. So I've been working with the Rays, along with some other people within the community, and this is an opportunity for, for the school, school board to be able to refer kids who are having issue, and it's not just kids. We have MOUs with several places for our mental health counselors, but you can... places for our mental health counselors, but you gotta realize, we have three, we have several counselors, but we have three mental health counselors, and usually by December, they are booked, you know, thirty, and they, you, it's not safe for them to go past thirty with dealing with some of the issues they have. So then we have to rely on outside sourcing, which this is an outside source. It's outside of the school system, but it works with some of the kids. Our counselors, our deans, our administration see kids come to them with a lot of issues. Uh, maybe that they don't really feel like they have a drug problem, and it may not, it may not involve right now, but eventually, as they go to college, or as they go home with a family, all of a sudden, you know, work, job, stress, exactly, comes up, and then it becomes an issue. So this is a way that when parents come to us, or even students come to us, they're having some of these issues, we are able to, uh, work with them and have a program that is available, uh, to help them with that situation. Uh, our counselors, uh, are all aware of this, so when kids' grades aren't doing so well, they can question the kids and, and find out if they do have a problem or would like to go through with this program. So it's not just about drug abuse. This is about kids who are falling behind and need someone to talk to. Our counselors are available for that, but they may not be specifically for the family counseling and so on that this counts for. And plus, our counselors are so, uh, in high demand of, you wouldn't, well, you would, Jane would know. They, they would know how much they get, comes to them, and it's good to have a resource when, uh, this comes up. As also expelled students could possibly, that leave our, our school system, we could, uh, they could carry on their education there, uh, through the guidance and so on of that, you know. So that, that's basically a real short, uh, version of what we, uh, the MOU and so on that we have with them, uh, and that we want to get started so we can provide, uh, some of the students and some of the families in our community that may have some issues that relate to drug abuse and so on. Sometimes it's not just the kid, it may be family members that are having this problem, but this gives us a resource and, uh, people within our community that wanna help, that wanna make a difference. So, uh, I think that's a very important part of it.
Well, I, having worked with Randy and all of you guys that have been in public school for so long, I, I've seen too many kids, and, and the opportunities today, lives are ruined just one stupid mistake. You know, the, the perennial people that are having problems, there are some kids that you can try and you can do everything, and, and they're just, uh, you don't give up on them, but it's, it's real heart-wrenching. But when you have a situation like we have today with kids with these cell phones and fentanyl and a pill that they can pick up online, and kids are having problems, it, they can't help it. I mean, they're, they're, make stupid decisions and do stupid things, and, and all people do, and I have to rely on the fact that I know Randy's working from his heart. It doesn't mean because we're expelling kids, that that's a, that's a bad thing, because some kids may do behaviors that they forfeit the right to attend a, a traditional public school. But there may be opportunities, uh, that qualify and quantify the fact that they could, they can be working with someone that was out there that is trained. We, we are one of the poorest counties in the state of Florida, and we are Title I school district, and, you know, I, I listen to people try to compare us to schools in Ponte Vedra or, or, you know, Miami on the beach or somewhere. It, it just doesn't click. This is a whole different situation here in Putnam County, and to look, having known Tracy Brown and known, I know Billy Cruz, and see just, even that situation, uh, was tragic, and, but there are so many kids, and I, we've all seen them. Every one of us have had kids that either did something and served time in prison or is dead today from making bad choices and not having the proper guidance. And Randy, I'm a hundred percent behind you guys trying to find a way to just let us know what we can do to, to make an opportunity available to save these kids, 'cause, I mean, that doesn't mean we're not gonna concentrate on the ones that are bound to go and prosper with, but these that can, for one caring adult in their life can make a difference in, in their entire lives. I think it, it's a wonderful thing.
Yes.
I think, I think the culture of our county is, is one that we care for some of the, our most need, and, I mean, and that's a number of, number of items, but I think these are students that are definitely have a need, and, you know, I, I commend Randy and, and all the folks he's working with for reaching out and trying to find some out-of-the-box ways to do that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes. Any, anything else? Any other questions about it? Jane said, took it?
No, you can answer. Thank you, Mr. Hedstrom.
Thank you.
We'll have a vote on this, and then we have to close our regular meeting to our recess, our regular meeting.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, G2, the memorandum of understanding for Florida recovery schools.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mr. David Buckles and a second by Ms. Jane Crawford to accept item G2. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Hedstrom. That's what I needed.
Okay. Um, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, or no, we're not. We're gonna start our, um.
Budget.
Budget.
Better do it on time, yep. Thank you, guys.
Bye.
Is that Scott?
Jane, Jane, didn't Eddie have a brother that got in an automobile? What was his name?
Eddie, oh, um.
I went to that channel, and I can't remember.
Wait, what was Eddie's?
Awesome, awesome.
Good to see you.
Can't remember.
It was a motorcycle. I can't remember either.
That's, that's back in the.
It doesn't matter. I, I was just.
Yeah, but I, I can't, it bothers me.
It bothered me. Go ahead, Jane.
Okay, we're going to open our special meeting, our final budget hearing.
Woo-hoo!
Ms. Rhonda Odom will lead us.
Next to the last one for me.
Through this.
Did you hear what she just said?
What?
Come on, next to the last one.
Next to the last one for me.
It's my last one.
She's rubbing it in.
Madam Chair, I've got a, I've got a statement to read before.
Okay.
Before, uh, Ms. Odom comes up.
Right.
And this is our final public bu- budget hearing, and, um, in accordance with section two zero zero point zero six five in chapters ten, ten, and ten eleven of the Florida statutes, I previously submitted the tentative balance budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, and recommended the millage to be levied. On July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, you approved the tentative budget and millage for advertising, and on August second, two thousand twenty-two, you approved the tentative budget and millage. The purpose of today's public hearing is to amend the proposed final budget as you see fit, approve a resolution or ordinance stating the millage rate to be levied, and approve a resolution adopting the district summary budget. That budget will then become the official district school board of Putnam County's budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay, and I know you all have it on board docs, but I do have hard copies if anybody wants some.
Uh, no, thank you.
I'm good.
Okay. Do we have to do a roll call for who's here? Is that?
Yes, it starts with a roll call.
Probably be the best thing to do.
District one?
Here.
District two?
Here.
District three?
Here.
District four?
Here.
And district five?
Here.
Thank you. Um, as the superintendent said, today we're here to discuss and adopt the final millage rates and the final district budgets for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. Um, I'm just gonna discuss the items that are on board docs today, 'cause I went into a lot of detail at the meeting to advertise and at the first tentative, uh, hearing, and gave you a lot of additional handouts and information. So I wanna be brief today, knowing, you know, the timeline and going back to our other meeting and everything, so I'm just gonna go over what the law says I have to go over. And the first thing that I do have to do is I have to discuss the, um, rollback rate, and that has to show up in our minutes that I discussed it and everything, 'cause that has to be turned into the state. So, um, as I've mentioned before, the rollback rate is the millage rate that it takes to bring into the district the same amount of tax revenue that we received last year, uh, not taking into consideration any new construction. Our rollback rate from your, uh, from the handout is four point nine nine seven one mils. Our twenty-two, twenty-three millage rate is five point four six three mils, so, um, that's our, our current proposed millage rate is an increase of zero point four six five nine mils from the rollback rate. And from page one of the handout, if any of you have it or have it in front of you on your computer, um, that's actually a decrease of three point one seven actual mils from last year's millage rate, and the entire amount of that decrease is due to the required local effort that's set by the legislature. Now, this, uh, the millage rate for this year, five point four six three mils, will bring in a hundred and nine percent of the dollars that the higher millage rate last year brought in, and that's because of our values in Putnam County increasing. So even though we had to advertise it as a proposed tax increase in the initial advertisements in the paper, we've actually lowered our millage rate yet again, and we have to, we have to stick with that required local effort rate that the legislature sets in order for us to get the FEFP funds, and for us, that's about sixty million dollars a year, and that's the biggest portion of our operating funds. So we're not allowed to, uh, go off of that amount that they tell us that we have to do. And, um, the other documents that I have, the budget summary ad is again, that one-page document that, where the entire budget is compressed down into a one-page document. Um, this changed from our tentative budget, because we've had time to post depreciation, compensated absences, and the OPEB liability, which is other post-employment benefits, to our NEEFAC funds, 'cause NEEFAC has to be considered as a business entity, and those are liabilities that are, um, required by governmental accounting standards. So we have to treat them as a business entity like they're making a profit or having a loss, and so we have to do those type of things. We also had changes in other funds, too, as additional accounts receivables came in or, uh, chargebacks were done from grant to general or the other way around.
For those that don't know, NEEFAC is a Northeast Florida educational consortium, and we serve as the fiscal agent for them. They are housed on State Road one hundred, and they show up in our administrative numbers and our, in our reports, whether it's Tax Watch or wherever. It's, it's always been kind of a bad feel when you're looking at stats, but.
Yes.
So people will understand, it, we have a, there's a big payroll for Putnam County that is out there, and that's a wonderful thing, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Sure. And as we go through the budgets after a while, uh, when they talk about each one and the dollar amount, the internal service funds and the enterprise funds are the NEEFAC funds, and we are their fiscal agent, so every report that we do to Tallahassee, the budgets, the annual financial report, it makes our annual financial report going from being like a thirty-page document, and that was board-approved today, too, to being a hundred and fifty-page document. So it's a lot of additional work being their fiscal agent. And there's only two consortiums in the state of Florida, where NEEFAC's fiscal agent and Escambia County is the fiscal agent for the P A E C. Is that the consortium's name?
Pace.
Pace.
Yeah, Panhandle Area Consortium.
So, um, like I was mentioning, it changed because of that type of thing, or just corrections or accounts receivable, and we also had a charter school, uh, closed down during the period of time, and that money was, that I had, uh, appropriated to, um, go to the charter school for their students and everything, has been brought back into a fund balance and everything, so, uh, you know, 'cause we didn't have to do, even though some of their students came to us, we didn't have to hire additional teachers because we were over projections, and so we, overall, in the district, lost ten teachers over what we had additionally allocated. So, um, the final two handouts on board docs, and these will be the first time you see them, are your, uh, copy of a board resolution that we have to have, that, um, and that's, has to be sent to the Department of Revenue, to the property appraisers office, and to the tax collector's office, and I will send those tomorrow. And that just, uh, tells them all what our final millage rates are, so that that can go on the final property tax bill that will come out by the property appraisers office. And then the other, uh, document is a resolution adopting, uh, the actual budget, and that will be transmitted to the Department of Education tomorrow in the format that they require as a hard copy. So the budget comes in several different formats. The one page that you have, the twenty-something page that's part of this resolution, that'll be transmitted to Tallahassee, and then when you break it all down to, into every function and object, several hundred-page document, but it all boils down to the exact same dollar amount, you know, there's, but in several different ways. So like I said, that's really all I've got today. I wanted to make it short. Whether it's sweet or not, I don't know, but I wanted to make it short.
It was very sweet.
So that, uh, we could go right back into the other meeting, so unless, before we go to the roll call vote, you know, I'll answer any questions that anybody up here or anybody in the public has, and if there's no questions, then we'll go to the roll call vote on all the millages and budgets.
Do we vote to approve or accept, or?
Is there any public comment?
About the budget?
On the budget?
I'm fancy. My knees went back from charter.
I've been through it so many times, Holly. I just, I know that people don't, that, there's those that don't understand and, and think that there's stuff that goes on that is not there, but all this has to be done. Every hoop that's, that Ms. Odom puts
Put y'all first.
Us through is required by law, and it's all followed, but I would.
You mean, you don't sit down and?
I'd make a motion.
Don't ring it up.
And get started.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
Yeah, but you do an excellent job.
So we'll move to the adoption of the millage levies for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year.
Madam Chairman, I, can I make a motion that we, on number, on C1, approve the tentative required local effort millage rate of three point two one five mils?
Roll call.
You need a second.
Do we have a second?
Second. I'll make it, okay.
Okay, then a roll call.
District one?
Yes.
And district two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
And five?
Yes.
Okay, so motion carries five zero. Um, item C2?
Uh, Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the final discretionary millage rate of zero point seven four eight mils.
I second that.
District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
And five?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item C3?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve final capital outlay millage rate of one point five zero zero mils.
I'll second that.
District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
And five?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item C4?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we adopt the, uh, well, the number, item C4, approve final total millage rate of five point four six three mils, which is nine point three two percent above the rollback rate.
Second.
District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
And five?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I'll for motion that we accept item, oh, we're done, we're done, okay.
Now, we'll move to the.
Adoption.
Section D, the adoption of district summary budget for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. Item D1?
Madam Chair, for motion that we approve item D1, the final general fund budget of one hundred seven million, three hundred sixty thousand, two hundred eleven dollars and seventy-seven cents.
I'll second that.
District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yay.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. I, item D2?
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we approve item D2, approve final debt service funds budget of one hundred and five thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Second.
District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yay.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
And five?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item D3?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve final capital project funds budget of eighteen million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, fifty-two dollars and six cents.
Second.
District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yay.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
And five?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Item D4?
Madam Chair, motion that we approve final special revenues funds budget of $73,837,530.87.
I'll second that.
District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yay.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
And five?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Item D5?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, we approve item D5, approve final internal service funds budget of $33,849,771.20.
I'll second that.
District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yay.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
And five?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Item D6?
Madam Chair, for motion that we approve final permanent funds budget of $131,959.39.
I'll second it.
District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yay.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
And five?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Item D7?
Madam Chair, I make the motion, we approve item D7, approve final enterprise funds budget
Second.
District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yay.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
And five?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Item D8?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the total district final budget in its entirety of $247,950,350.13.
I'll second that.
District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yay.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
And five?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. We'll move to section E, approval of the resolution determining revenues and millages levied for 2022-2023. Item E1?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion, we approve resolution, approve the resolution determining revenues and millages levied for the 2022-2023 year.
I'll second that.
District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yay.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
And five?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Section F, approval of the resolution adopting the district summary budget for 2022-2023.
Madam Chairman, I make motion that we approve the resolution adopting the district summary budget for 2022-2023.
I'll second that.
District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yay.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
And five?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Thank you all, appreciate it. Does anyone have any comments? Thank you, Ms. Odom.
Thank you, Mrs. Odom.
Thank you, Rhonda.
This meeting is adjourned. And now, we'll go back into...
It's almost like he's saying...
Regular session, no.
I'll just do it.
We're gonna, do I have to hit it again? We're gonna go into emergency session to take place on, to take votes on two different items. Where's my emergency?
Should be under your...
It should be attached to your resume.
I know she gave them to us.
Oh, it's attached to our agenda. No, it's not. Right here, this one. Oh, that's what it is?
Let me see it.
Okay. Oh, it's a serv pro thing.
Okay, okay, got it, thank you.
Okay, so item L1, serv pro quote, okay.
Make a motion, L1, to approve serv pro quote for Jenkins' property claim.
I'll second, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis and a second by Mr. David Buckles to approve item L1. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries 5-0. Item L2?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna ask Mr. Bowen to come up and provide additional information on that.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. So the property in question is the same property that's on the consent agenda, and there was an offer that was advertised a week ago for $700,000, and that's on the consent agenda. This morning, we had an additional offer for $900,000 for the same piece of property. The original offer was to convert the property from mini stor-, I mean, from its current state to mini storage. This offer is to abolish, I'm sorry, to...
Demolish.
Demolish, thank you.
Close.
I'm still thinking about Rhonda's business meeting running around in my head.
You're thinking about me...
Demolish the existing structures.
Having a panel here when you were in school, aren't you?
Well, that, too. Demolish the existing structures and then replace that with homes, community homes there, so, yes, and, and, so I think it's, it's kind of exciting for the neighborhood, and I wanted to make sure it's not, it wasn't like Section 8 or anything like that, but it was actually quality homes and, and ER Horton, I think it is?
Yeah, they're associated with ER Horton.
ER Horton.
So it's a developer kind of person?
Yeah.
Thomas, do you remember what year the old, original?
So the original structure was there in 1918. That was the library building that was there out in front, but most of the adjoining buildings were built in the '30s, which still mean, they're quite old.
Yeah.
And this, it's, it sits on approximately eight acres, and I can't really see that being big enough for a future school site, which is one of the reasons why we put it up for sale. The $900,000 is, I think, a good offer. It's appraised at $1.39 million, which is 64.7% of the appraised value, but it's gonna cost them another $400,000 just to demolish and abate that particular site, so...
At least.
That brings us, that brings them up pretty high, actually over almost 94% of what we're asking or the appraised value, anyway. In lieu of other recent events that I won't go into detail about with our other properties or at least one of them, and I've said again and again and again, I don't want to see any piece of property we own as a school district contribute to the demise of any community. If there's something that we can do to, you know, help that property be repurposed for something that's beneficial to that community, whether it's with another governmental agency or if it's just independent businessperson, I think it's, especially if they're giving us close to what we're asking for, I think it's a pretty good deal. When you gave us the authority or the superintendent the authority to sell property with the proclamation, one of the things we were advised by legal counsel to not accept was anything under 90%. So we're bringing any offers, and I think even if it was 95%, we still bring it back before the board to give a final nod. But I'm bringing it with the recommendation, and it's, it's pretty much my recommendation that you accept this offer. And, and, you know, I guess we still, you'll still have to entertain the, the, the offer that's on the regular new business that was properly noticed. But the fact that no one showed up with pitchforks about that offer, which was $700,000 tonight, and it was properly noticed, I think we stand on solid ground with this offer today, even though it's on the, it's listed as an emergency item. I might want to defer to your legal counsel to, you know, elaborate there if you'd like, but that's just kind of my reasoning. I think we're kind of safe because we had an offer that was properly advertised for $700,000 all week, and I don't see anybody here to dispute that, so I think it's good money, and I'll, I'll stop at this point unless you have additional questions.
Attorney, are you okay with all that?
Yes.
I was, I was the assistant principal there for quite a few years on a two-campus school when it was Browning Parish 1 and 2 on Lewis-Brow Road, and you were probably a student there.
I was a student there, yeah.
Yeah, I probably didn't recognize you from the front, I got so used to...
That was in middle school. I was decent in elementary school.
It's 1918, I mean, we've had people, I can remember, come up and take pictures of the bricks where they carved in them and stuff, and, you know, the old saying, people are true to their school, but you love those old schools, but they're old, and they're, they're not up to snuff, and we have propped them up for, well, since 1918, so...
And we don't have anything left in any of those buildings, none of them are occupied.
We actually moved purchasing, this is one of the last ones there, and they're actually located here now.
Yeah, and, and even with that, like what recently happened at Jenkins', you can't, the old Jenkins' School, you can't really, if it can happen, it's gonna happen, and I, I think we need to move forward and, but we'll wait till, I guess this has to be done in the next meeting, is that correct?
I think we're safe to do it now.
It can be done now, is that correct?
I would like to make a motion, having worked there for years, and my children go in there for years, and, and holding barbecues in the middle of the night to sell, to raise money for that school when I was, worked there, that we go ahead and approve the offer as presented. If that's...
If counsel says...
That's my recommendation.
Counsel says okay, then I would, I would do that and sit around in another year or two and think we're gonna do, do much better, because it's gonna cost a lot of money to demolish some of that stuff.
So did you just make a motion?
Yes.
I second it.
Okay. Do I need to clarify that?
All right, I would like it clarified.
Okay, I make a motion, we approve it.
Yes.
We approve it.
Without all these little add-ins.
Yeah, well, that's just a lot of history there, you know.
Mark wants to say something.
Mr. Bowen, just a point of technicality?
Yes.
The second offer is $750,000.
$750,000.
I just want to make sure that's correct for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe we ought to hold off another 10 minutes.
The first offer was 750, this offer remains 900,000.
Okay.
I said 700,000 a minute ago several times, but it was actually 700,000.
In the contract or the document, it does say pending approval for rezoning, is that correct, Mark?
Yeah.
Yes, and the offer is being considered as contingent on several things, asbestos mediation, feasibility study, and then the rezoning for the property.
Excellent, thank you, Mark.
It backs, backs right up the rolling, I mean...
I would like to just, when, Mr. Bowen, when you came up, you said that it was in the consent agenda, and I just want to make it for the record...
It was their new business.
That we did not approve it in the consent agenda.
No, it was in, it was listed as new business, I'm sorry.
Right, so I just wanted to make sure.
When he said that, I double-checked to make sure.
Yeah, I was like, I don't remember consenting to that.
Right, so the original offer that was in the, it was listed under new business all week, that was properly noticed, was for $750,000, and that's still there for you to, for you to consider under new business. And I would, I'm no school board attorney, but I would handle that one separately.
Okay, Mr. Buckles, do you want to clarify your motion now?
Uh, I, once again, I make a motion that we accept the higher number that...
900,000.
900,000 to purchase the property from the district as presented here to us today.
Jane?
And I'll second that motion. Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. David Buckles and a second by Ms. Jane Crawford. Is there any discussion? Mr. McGinnis, I heard you start to say something.
No, he made it clear, I was making sure that we were differentiating offer number one to not for number two, so the offer number one was at 750.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries 5-0. We'll go out of emergency session and back into regular session. We have no unfinished business, we have several items under new business.
71.
Well, we just did item N1. Is that in two places? No, that's, this is the 750.
Oh, okay, 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 okay.
And we need to resolve that one, yes.
Well, can that, let me ask you this, Madam Attorney. Can, let's just say, and Mark, you can answer this, too, if for some reason there was an issue and this...
Fell through.
Fell through or whatever happened, I'm, and I'm asking your guidance on this, is this, could the board table this or in case the original one fell through, where we could come back and entertain that offer? And what would you suggest on that?
Well, I...
Mark, do you have any input on that?
Contingent, sir.
I don't really, however, I would like it may well be several months into it before they backed out, and I can't believe these people are serious, both, both of them are serious. I think it will be several months if you're willing to hold on to it and backfire it for several months, I'm sure.
Yeah, I just want to have kind of a plan B in case something happens.
Well, that's up to the attorney, I mean...
Yeah, that's why I was asking your guidance on that.
Our only plan B would go to, to the original price of whoever said that, and then, you know, you never know, you might get a better price in the meantime, but we've already committed to this higher offer, but you advise us.
I mean, it would be totally up to the board, you could accept it as a secondary offer, you know, and, and then make it be contingent on whether or not the, the first one falls through, but then you are committing to that $750,000 price, and this would be several months out.
I would, I would prefer to just go ahead with what we've done, and then, you know, it's just, it is what it is, but...
So... That might, that may not be the wisest way to proceed, and do you want to kind of elaborate and say what you said?
I had a good point on that about, because you're kind of walking yourself into that price, is that kind of what your point was?
Exactly what we, that's exactly what we were talking about.
Somebody may come with 850.
Yeah, thank you.
Right. Or somebody...
Good advice, yeah.
Thank you.
So then you all would want to...
Delete it like it is.
We would want to...
Well, and you being an attorney, if somebody walked in and offered 2 million, which they're not going to do, but, I mean, we reserve the right to back out if we, but no, that's not...
No.
See, so that's, that's kind of how it works, most corrections, so...
Yeah, you can't...
I, I got you.
So Madam Attorney, or just for their guidance, are they, since they've already accepted or this original offer, they basically need to reject this or turn this down?
Exactly.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm. So we have to have a, a motion?
What do you?
That we reject the 750,000.
It was 750?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we formally reject the offer that was made because we've got a much better offer than that, that first offer was $750,000, and we as a board should reject that at this time.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so the, okay, so all those in favor of rejecting item N1, say aye.
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 All those opposed, none opposed, so, motion carries five zero to reject that offer.
Okay.
Okay, item N two, is a consensus to advertise amendment of by law. So, do we need a roll call vote on that, or we...
We just need to turn and read, need to advertise.
Here we go, and all of these...
Advertise, advertise, advertise.
It's been forever.
Could I take a, a break real quick?
Yeah, I think this is be good time.
We'll have a five-minute recess.
Not at the reorganization.
Ma'am?
Do y'all do the advertising things one at a time?
I thought Phil just said I had to be...
We're gonna have to do everything one, one item at a time, I would think.
When's Jane's last meeting?
The eighteen, one time, didn't make... But what, what, what on here would I be at?
Okay, we're, we're back in, back in session.
Okay, so, because they're not, oh, y'all changed that. Let's pretend it's the eighteen. Oh, sorry.
Okay. All right. So, um, so, we're gonna need a motion and a second, and then we're gonna have a roll call vote.
All right, ma'am, uh, Madam Attorney, there's no getting around this, it's gonna have to be everyone individually, is that correct?
Well, yes, we were just discussing that a moment ago.
Okay.
That, that's been the procedure.
That's the way it rolls.
And so, you're gonna read each one, and, and then we just say advertise, advertise, or we have to make the motion to...
No, she'll, she'll just call off this, we'll, we'll, each one of us will pick out one and say, I would assume that, is that correct?
Uh, yes.
And if anyone has discussion on it, I'll just pause between the second.
Well, we've already done N, N one, is that correct?
Correct.
Or do we need to redo it?
Correct.
Okay, we're, we're done with that one. Done. Madam Chair, would you like me to start?
Yes, sir.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a, a recommendation to approve number two, N two, consensus to advertise amendment to by law, hashtag zero one four four term.
Second. Can we have a motion by Mr. David Buckles and a second by Ms. Sandy Gillyard to accept item N two?
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero. N three?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we recommend to advertise consensus to advertise amendment of by law, hashtag zero one seven two, visitation of schools by individual school board members and legislatures.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis and a second by Mr. David Buckles to accept item N three.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero. Item N four.
Madam Chair, motion consensus to advertise amendment of policy number eleven twenty, employment of administrators.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Ms. Sandra Gillyard and a second by Mr. David Buckles to accept item N four.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
Five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero. N five?
Madam Chairman, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, N five consensus to advertise amendment of policy number eleven twenty point one one, preference of, for veterans in employment.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. David Buckles, a second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard to accept item N five.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Oh, advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
Five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero. Item N six?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to advertise the, or to approve the consensus to advertise amendment of policy one one two one point zero one, criminal background screening and employment history.
Second.
Second, Sandy Gillyard.
Motion by Ms. Jane Crawford and a second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard to accept item N six.
All right. District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
N seven, oh, motion carries five zero. Item N seven?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve N seven consensus to advertise amendment of policy number one one two two, non-discrimination and equal employment.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis, a second by Mr. David Buckles.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero. N eight?
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we approve N eight, or, or advertise it, approve for advertising, uh, consensus to advertise amendment of policy one one eight zero, records and reports.
I'll second that. A motion by Mr. David Buckles, a second by Ms. Jane Crawford.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero. Item N nine?
Madam Chair, offer motion to advertise consensus to advertise amendment of policy number twelve thirteen, student supervision and welfare.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Sandra Gillyard and a second by Mr. David Buckles.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Jane. Advertise.
Motion carries five zero. Item N ten?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve consensus to advertise amendment of policy one two three two, political activities.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Ms. Jane Crawford and a second by Mr. David Buckles.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Madam Chair, I make a...
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we, make a, uh, we recommend advertising for item N eleven consensus to advertise amendment of policy number fifteen ninety personnel file.
Second. A motion by Mr. David Buckles, a second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard.
And district one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve N twelve consensus to advertise amendment of policy number two two one zero, curriculum development.
I'll second that. Motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis, second by Ms. Jane Crawford.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero. N thirteen?
Madam Chair, a motion approval, a consensus to advertise amendment of policy two two one five, program of instruction.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Sandra Gillyard, a second by Mr. David Buckles.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve N fourteen consensus to advertise amendment of policy number two two six zero, non-discrimination access to equal educational opportunity.
I'll second that. Motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis, second by Ms. Jane Crawford.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
Five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero. N fifteen?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve consensus to advertise, N fifteen consensus to advertise amendment of policy two three seven zero point zero one, virtual instruction.
Second. Motion by Mr. David Buckles and a second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
Five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero. N sixteen?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consensus to advertise amendment of policy two three seven zero point zero one, virtual instruction.
No, we just said that one.
Sixteen, consensus to advertise amendment of policy two four one zero, school health services.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Jane Crawford and a second by Mr. David Buckles.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve N seventeen consensus, consensus to advertise amendment of policy number two four one six, student privacy and parental access of, to information.
Second.
Motion by Mr. David, Mr. Bud McGinnis and a second by Mr. David Buckles.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Madam Chairman, I make a...
Motion carries five zero.
I make a motion, we approve, uh, for advertising N eighteen consensus to advertise amendment of policy twenty four seventeen, comprehensive health education.
I'll, go ahead. Motion by Mr. David Buckles, second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, approve consensus to advertise amendment of policy number two four six zero, exceptional student education.
I'll second that. Motion by Ms. Sandra Gillyard, second by Ms. Jane Crawford.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero. N twenty?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve consensus to advertise amendment of policy two five two zero, selection and adoption of instructional materials.
Second. Motion by Ms. Jane Crawford, second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam, Madam Chair, I would like to move that we approve N twenty one consensus to advertise deletion of policy two five two zero point zero one, educational media matters select, material selection.
Second. And a motion by Mr. David Buckles, a second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve N twenty two consensus to advertise amendment of policy number two five two two, challenges to adoption or use of instructional library or reading list materials.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis, second by Mr. David Buckles.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, offer motion to approve consensus to advertise amendment to policy two six two three, student assessment.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Sandra Gillyard, second by Mr. David Buckles.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries, I mean, five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve twenty, item N twenty four consensus to advertise amendment of policy number three one two zero, employment of instructional staff.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis, second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve consensus to advertise amendment of policy three one two zero point one one, preference for veterans in employment.
Second. Motion by Ms. Jane Crawford, second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
Five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chairman, I'd make a motion that we look at approving item N twenty four consensus to advertise amendment of policy...
Twenty six.
Excuse me, twenty six, N twenty six consensus to advertise amendment to policy three one two one point zero one, criminal background screening and employment history checks.
Second. Motion by Mr. David Buckles, second by Mr. McGinnis.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
Five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve N twenty seven consensus to advertise amendment of policy number three one two two, non-discrimination and equal op, employment opportunity.
I'll sec, second that.
Motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis, second by Mr. David Buckles.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, a motion consensus to advertise amendment of policy number three one two nine, conflict of interest.
I'll second that. Motion by Ms. Sandra Gillyard, second by Ms. Jane Crawford.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Sorry. Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve N twenty eight consensus to advertise amendment of policy number three one two nine, conflict of interest.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis, second by Mr. David Buckles.
You didn't say point one.
Point zero one, because I did conflict of interest.
I thought you did that, let's...
My bad.
Point.
Okay, let's go.
All right, let's repeat that, Bud.
Consensus to advertise amendment of policy number three one two nine point zero one, tutoring.
I'll second. We have a motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis and a second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard.[1353.62]
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
Five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve N thirty, consensus to advertise amendment of policy three two one three, student supervision and welfare.
Second.
Motion by Mr. David Buckles, second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Advertise.
Five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, a motion approval for consensus to advertise amendment of policy three two, three two, political activities.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Sandra Gillyard, second by Ms. Jane Crawford.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we approve N thirty-two consensus to advertise amendment of policy number three four one zero, compensation.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis, second by Mr. David Buckles.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, a motion approval for consensus to advertise amendment of policy number three five nine zero, personnel file.
I'll second it.
Motion by Ms. Sandra Gillyard, second by Ms. Jane Crawford.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero. N thirty-four.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we approve N thirty-four consensus to advertise amendment of policy number four one two zero, employment support.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis, second by Mr. David Buckles.
District one.
Advertise.
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 Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, a motion approval for consensus to advertise amendment of policy number four one two zero point one one, preference for veteran, veterans in employment.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Sandra Gillyard, second by Mr. David Buckles.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve consensus to advertise amendment of policy four one two two, non-discrimination and. Go up, thirty-six, number thirty-six. Consensus to advertise amendment of policy four one two one point zero one, criminal background screening and employment history.
Second. Second.
Motion by Ms. Jane Crawford, second by Mr. David Buckles.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we approve N thirty-seven consensus to advertise amendment of policy number four one two two, non-discrimination and equal employment opportunity.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis, second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
Five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chairman, I move, we approve of N thirty-eight consensus to advertise amendment of policy four two one three, student supervision of welfare.
Second.
Motion by Mr. David Buckles, second by Ms. Jane Crawford.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero. N thirty-nine.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve N thirty-nine consensus to advertise amendment of policy number four two three two, political activities.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis, second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
Five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve of N forty consensus to advertise amendment of policy four five nine zero, personnel file.
Second.
Motion by Mr. David Buckles, second by Ms. Jane Crawford.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve item N forty-one consensus to advertise amendment of policy number five one two one, controlled open enrollment.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis, second by Mr. David Buckles.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
Five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we approve N forty-two consensus to advertise amendment of policy number five three three five, care of students with chronic health conditions.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis, second by Mr. Jane, Mr. David Buckles.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Five. Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I motion approval for consensus to advertise amendment of policy number five three five zero, student suicide prevention awareness and screening.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Sandra Gillyard, second by Mr. David Buckles.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we approve for advertising of N forty-four consensus to advertise amendment of policy five four one zero, student progression.
Second.
Motion by Mr. David Buckles, second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
Five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve consensus to advertise amendment of policy five four one zero point zero one, promotion acceleration, placement and retention.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Jane Crawford, second by Mr. David Buckles.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we approve N forty-six consensus to advertise amendment of policy number five four two zero, reporting student progress.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis, second by Mr. David Buckles.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we approve of N forty-seven consensus to advertise amendment of policy five four six zero, graduation requirements.
Second.
Motion by Mr. David Buckles, second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
I'm sorry.
You're all right.
I'm jumping the gun.
You can have it.
Three. Advertise.
And four.
Advertise.
Five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, motion approval for consensus to advertise amendment of policy number five five zero zero, student conduct.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Sandra Gillyard, second by Jane, Ms. Jane Crawford.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
Five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we approve N forty-nine consensus to advertise amendment of policy number five five one one, dress and grooming.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis, second by Mr. David Buckles.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
Five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve for advertising N fifty consensus to advertise amendment of policy five five one seven point zero one, bullying and harassment.
Second.
A motion by Mr. David Buckles, second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve consensus to advertise amendment of policy five five two zero, disruptions of schools and school-sponsored activities.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Jane Crawford and a second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
Five.
Jane.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we approve for advertising N fifty-two consensus to advertise amendment fifty-six thirty point zero one, seclusion and restraint of students.
Second.
Motion by Mr. David Buckles, second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, motion approval of N fifty-three consensus to advertise amendment of policy number five seven one zero.
I'll second that.
Student and parent compliance.
Motion by Ms. Sandra Gillyard.
Complaints, I'm sorry, complaints.
To David Buckles.
Compliance.
You did fine, Sandy.
Okay, I didn't see it.
I'm sorry, district one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise. We're getting slap happy.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve N fifty-four consensus to advertise amendment of policy number five seven eight zero, student parent rights.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis, second by Mr. David Buckles.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
Five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we approve N fifty-five consensus to advertise amendment of policy six one one zero, grant funds.
Second.
Motion by Mr. David Buckles, second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we approve N fifty-six consensus to advertise amendment of policy number six one one four, cost principles.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis, second by Mr. David Buckles.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we approve N fifty-seven consensus to advertise amendment of policy six two three three, district budget.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. David Buckles, second by Ms. Jane Crawford.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve consensus to advertise amendment of policy six three two zero, purchasing and contracting for commodities and what is that?
Contractual.
contractual services.
Services. I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Jane Crawford, second by Mr. David Buckles.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we approve N fifty-nine consensus to advertise amendment of policy number six three two two, construction, contracting and bidding.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis, second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we approve item N sixty consensus to advertise amendment of policy number six three two five, procurement, federal grants.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis, second by Mr. David Buckles.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
Five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, motion approval for N sixty-one consensus to advertise amendment to policy six four eight zero, expenditure.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sandra Gillyard, second by Ms. Jane Crawford.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
Five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we, we approve for advertising of N sixty-two consensus to advertise amendment of policy six five three zero, reemployment assistance.
Second.
Motion by Mr. David Buckles, second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
Five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we approve N sixty-three consensus to advertise amendment of policy number six 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 one, instructional materials allocation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis, second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
Five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we approve for advertising of N sixty-four consensus to advertise amendment of policy eight one four one, mandatory reporting of misconduct.
Second.
A motion by Mr. David Buckles, second by Ms. Jane Crawford.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
Five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, motion approval for N sixty-five consensus to advertise amendment of policy number eight four two zero, emergency management, emergency preparedness and emergency response agencies.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Sandra Gillyard, second by Mr. David Buckles.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
Five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we approve for consensus to advertise amendment in, it be N sixty-six, amendment of policy eight four zero five, school safety and security.
Second. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Motion by Mr. David Buckles and a second by Ms. Jane Crawford.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we approve N sixty-seven consensus to advertise amendment of policy number eight four zero seven, safe school officers.
I'll second, second.
Motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis, second by Ms. Jane Crawford.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
And five.
Advertise.
Madam Chair, I make a motion.
Five zero.
I make a motion we approve N sixty-eight for advertising be consensus to advertise amendment of policy eight four seven five, criminal background screening for contractor Criminal Background Screening for Contractor Access.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. David Buckles, second by Ms. Jane Crawford.
District one.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
Five.
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we approve.
Sorry.
N 69 Consensus to Advertise Amendment of Policy Number 9150, School Visitors.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis, a second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard.
One.
Advertise.
Two.
Advertise.
Three.
Advertise.
Four.
Advertise.
Five.